We are in our ninth special session. Today is December 11th of 2015. The time is 2:08 PM. We are on day three of this session's agenda. First item on the agenda is prayer. Congresswoman Edwards, would you please be to support the prayer?
Good Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for all the people who are here. We rejoice in the season. As we go about to work with the OCE nation Congress today, give us kind hearts and strong minds to do the will for people. Bless those who are ill, those who are in need of your prayers. Bless those who are overseas, working, or ourselves in the military. Thank you for all those people who are part of us. We ask that you help us to make these good decisions today and to take time to think about all of our members, what is in the destinies of the OCE nation. Pass these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Congresswoman Edwards. Next item on the agenda is approval of the journal. And I would like to tell you that we got out here very late yesterday evening. I was handed the journal to review today during a committee meeting, and I failed to get it complete. So we will have two journals to approve on the day. My apologies. Excuse me, let's have a real call, too. Congresswoman Buckelhead? Congresswoman Edwards? Congressman Hamilton?
Present.
Congressman Yedd?
Present.
Congressman Makers?
Here.
Congressman Mason?
Here.
Congressman Norris?
Here.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Okay.
Congressman Shaw?
Here.
Congressman Suprenon?
Here.
Congressman Walker?
Here.
Speaker Wyborn?
Here.
Assistant Chief Redhorn?
Present.
We have a forum. I've already announced about the journal. And we are on reports to select committees. Are there any select committees to report? Congresswoman Pratt?
Good speaker, members of Congress. The Rules, Ethics, and Inversment Committee met yesterday evening and again on Wednesday evening to our staff, for all of their assistance and hard work. Reporting Bill Number ONCA 1610, an Act to amend ONCA 1582 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Land, Commerce, and Public Safety for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $3,558 and to establish an alternate effective date sponsored by Shannon Edwards. Final Committee Action is due pass as properly enrobed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill Number ONCA 1611, an Act to amend ONCA 1583 to reduce the appropriation to the Health, Fitness, and Wellness Division of the OCE nation for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $17,036 and to establish an alternate effective date sponsored by Shannon Edwards. Final Committee Action is due pass as properly enrobed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill Number ONCA 1612, an Act to amend ONCA 1584 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Government Operations for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $72,211 and to establish an alternate effective date sponsored by Shannon Edwards. The Final Committee Action is due pass as properly enrobed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill Number ONCA 1613, an Act to amend ONCA 1585 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Education and Early Childhood Services for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $83,254 and to establish an alternate effective date sponsored by Shannon Edwards. The Final Committee Action is due pass as properly enrobed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill ONCA 1614, an Act to amend ONCA 1586 to reduce the appropriation to the Cultural Preservation Arts Heritage and Language Division of the OCE nation for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $51,279 and to establish an alternate effective date sponsored by Shannon Edwards. The Final Committee Action is due pass as properly enrobed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Suprenon. Bill ONCA 1615, an Act to amend ONCA 1587 to reduce the appropriation to the Child, Family, and Senior Community Services Division of the OCE nation for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $23,235 and to establish an alternate effective date sponsored by Shannon Edwards. The Final Committee Action is due pass as properly enrobed with two yes votes from Pratt, Suprenon, one absent Shaw. Bill ONCA 1616, an Act to amend and restate the OCE Nation Membership Act, 21 ONC Section 1-101 EDSEC, and to establish an alternate effective date sponsored by Shannon Edwards. The Final Committee Action is due pass as properly enrobed with two yes votes from Pratt, Suprenon, one absent Shaw.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Next item on the agenda is reports to standing committees. Are there any standing committees to report? Seeing none, we are now on bills and resolutions on first reading. Congressman Shaw, I believe you're the first, or the only bill under that heading, or resolution.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of Congress. I'm reading in ONCR 1606, a resolution requesting the OCE nation gaming enterprise board to include an additional $6 million in annual distribution to the OCE nation in its annual plan of operations, operation, fiscal year 2016. I'd like to make a motion, this might may, into sustaining rules, modifying the agenda, and place ONCR 1606 on general order day two on today's agenda.
Done. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, ONCR 1606 is placed on a general order day two. On today's agenda, we're now on agenda item number seven, bills and resolutions on general order. General order day one, amendments. The legislation is read in by sponsor. The first one under that heading is would be Congresswoman Edwards. We are on general order day one. If the type of on the agenda needs to be read in by sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. ONCA 1528 is an Act to amend 16ONC Section 315 of the Health Benefit Act to change the benefit balance carryover to two years and to establish an alternate effective date. The intent of this bill is to limit the health benefit carryover from two years, from three years to two years, meaning the current year plus one, rather than the current year plus two. The whole entire reason for me sponsoring this bill was the fact that I didn't think we understood the entire fiscal impact of what allowing, really, the one-year carryover and the two-year carryover, original plus one and original plus two, was going to do with our, to the nation's finances. We have some better information about that now. And in furtherance of describing this bill, I'd like to provide the following information that was gleaned yesterday. There are currently 8,462 OCE members enrolled in the health benefit. There are also 348 over 65 elders enrolled in the Medicare Supplement. The estimated 2016 premiums for those elders enrolled in Medicare Supplement will be $1,130,000. Of those 8,462 members that are currently enrolled in the health benefit, 81 percent of those people have made no claims, meaning they either have $500 or $1,000 remaining. That number is 6,770 people. If those 6,770 people made a $500 claim, that would be an additional $4.8 million that the nation would incur in expenses for those people for the year.
Congresswoman Edwards?
I'm getting ready to make a question.
Are you going to wrap up the explanation of this bill?
I am. Through December 4th, $4 million of claims have been paid out. And the rollover, we're calling the rollover, or the carry, third for to a rollover, from 2014 to 2015 was almost $2 million. Those are the numbers we are addressing. Unfortunately, I do not believe that we have enough of an actuarial position at this time to know whether this nation going forward is going to be able to afford to incur the kind of expenses that we will need to incur to promise, to make our promise to our people. However, I said that I would withdraw the bill because I don't believe we're going to have enough time to get that information before December. And I don't want to take away something that we've already provided. So in the absence of being able to know and make a informed, the best informed decision that we can, I stand before you with these numbers and move to withdraw the bill.
Say it.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? Congresswoman Edwards?
Well, I think I'm going to be voting against it because I think we still need to commit the amount of money. We need to know what amount of money we're talking about. It could be as much as $8 million a year. However, I'm willing to stand by the decision of this body as to whether they're satisfied that we can afford a two-year carryover and will prioritize it. Because I don't want to get in a position where we've given a promise to our people. That was the main thing that the health benefit people, that the Medicare Supplement people have said. We don't trust you to be able to carry this forward. I want to be able to keep our promises. And I'm not sure whether we can do that or not. So I'll be voting no, and I'm leaving it to you guys to decide.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Let's do a recall of the, the motion to withdraw. Congresswoman Edwards?
No.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yedd?
No.
Congressman Makers?
No.
Congressman Mason? Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
No.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Here.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Buckelhead?
Yes.
Speaker Wyborn?
Yes.
Assistant Chief Redhorn? Bill's withdrawn. We are now, let me see. Congressman Walker?
Catch my breath. Thank you, Speaker. Good afternoon, Speaker. I'm reading in ONCR 1604, a resolution to adopt and approve the OCE nation hazard mitigation plan.
Thank you, Congressman. Congressman Buckelhead?
ONCR 1605, a resolution to approve regulations governing the membership application process, membership card issue process, or remuneration of membership in correspondence about membership status with other governments.
Thank you, Congresswoman. We are now on general order day two when amendments can be proposed. The first resolution under that heading is ONCR 1606, a resolution requesting the OCE nation gaming enterprise board to include an additional $6 million annual distribution to the OCE nation in its annual plan of operation for fiscal year 2016. Are there any amendments to be proposed to this bill? Congresswoman Edwards?
Page one line, whatever $6 million is, strike $6 million and insert $1 million. Can you help me out with the line?
Would you like a, a brief recess to write amendments? But I didn't offer the body amount to write amendments for this bill. I just wanted to write into it.
Sure.
Second, all in favor of a brief recess, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we are on a brief recess. That's our floor. Calling you back into order after a brief recess to get amendments together. I believe Congresswoman Edwards has an amendment to ONCR 1606 that wasn't fully formed. Would you please restate that?
Page 138, strike $6 million and insert $1 million. An additional $1 million.
Say it. Okay. We are now on general order day. We are, yeah. Yes, Congress.
The Rules, Modify the Agenda, and move, and move ONCA, CR 1606 to general order day three.
Say it.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
No discussion. Do we need a roll call vote? Roll call vote, please. Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yedd?
Yes.
Congressman Makers?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
No.
Congressman Norris?
No.
Congresswoman Pratt?
No.
Congressman Shaw?
No.
Congressman Suprenon?
Here.
Congressman Walker?
No.
Congresswoman Buckelhead?
No.
Congressman Edwards?
Yes.
Speaker Wyborn? The motion fails. We are now on bills and resolutions on third reading on our agenda today. The first bill on third reading today is ONCA 1610, an Act to amend ONCA 1582 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Land, Commerce, and Public Safety for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $3,558 and to establish an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Edwards is a sponsor of that bill. How do you wish to proceed?
Split my time.
The floor is yours.
The bill states its purpose. If any congressman ever has any questions that they want to ask during their time to talk, I'm available to answer them in my closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Seeing none, the question is, shall ONCA 1610 pass? Excuse me. Would you like to close, Congresswoman?
I might add that in the interim between the time this bill was introduced and the first day of session, we received a attorney general's opinion on some of the language in the previous appropriations bill and the discussion of it. One of the things that I gleaned from that is if Congress didn't know the amount of salaries, or if Congress wanted to reduce salaries, they should reduce it. That's exactly what this bill does. Thank you.
Thank you, Congresswoman. The question is, shall ONCA 1610 pass? Congressman Yedd?
Yes.
Congressman Makers?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Here.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congressman Buckelhead?
Yes.
Congresswoman Edwards?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Speaker Wyborn? Yes. The bill passes, and it has an alternate effective date. Is there any discussion to that? All in favor of the alternate effective date, say yes.
Yes.
Are there any yet? Seeing none, the alternate effective date passes. The next bill is ONCA 1611, an Act to amend ONCA 1583 to reduce the appropriation to the Health, Fitness, and Wellness Division of the OCE nation for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $17,036 and to establish an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Edwards is a sponsor of that bill. How do you wish to proceed?
Split my time.
Congresswoman Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you, members of Congress. Same offer. Anyone has any questions, please come to the podium and ask, and I'll respond in the rest of my time.
Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Seeing none?
Split my time.
The question is, shall ONCA 1611 pass? Congressman Makers?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Here.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Buckelhead?
Yes.
Congresswoman Edwards?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yedd?
Yes.
Speaker Wyborn? Yes. ONCA 1611 passes. It has an alternate effective date on there. Is there any discussion to that? The question is, shall the alternate effective date pass? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the alternate effective date passes. The next bill on third reading today is ONCA 1612, an Act to amend ONCA 1584 to reduce the appropriation to the Division of Government Operations for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $76,381 and to establish an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Edwards is a sponsor of that bill. How do you wish to proceed?
My.
Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Congressman?
We're in 1612?
Yes, sir, we are 1612. Congressman Shaw, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of Congress. I want to remind my colleagues here that 1612 does more than just remove the proposed wage increase. It includes a relocation of revenue line items that ultimately were sold and another $800,000 plus going out of our tribal fund in the treasury. And so I think he realized that it's not exactly just like the other bills that only dealt with wage change. I have spoken to this voting committee on the floor of Congress, and I'm telling them now to please reconsider whether we are in a position to make those expenditures. At this point in time, the annual plan, any additional naming distributions have not been passed. We don't know when that will pass. We don't know what the final form will look like. We don't know if we need any additional naming distributions. I'm always maintain that we work with what we have right now or what we know what we have, including our projected revenue. I think the spend is down and close towards that $24,000 amount, which would be where we were at, would be at, is it was dangerously low balance in the country's balance and treasury. So we're going to vote no.
Thank you, Congressman. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Seeing none, Congressman Edwards, would you like to close?
Well, I am willing to go with Congressman Shaw's theory that we ought to require that department to live by its proposal and what it brings in, and then let the treasurer sort that through, through the division spending, and let that department, or let that division come back to Congress if they needed the money. But the Congress, by majority, didn't want to do that. So I'm going to support the bill. I think there's some important things in that division that need to happen going forward. And that includes, and probably right at the top of the list, is to continue to get the land that we have, that we need and trust, into trust. And that's one of the obligations of this division. There's some other things that this division does that are very important. I think it was a mistake to put that $618,000 in another line item. You've heard me say, I don't want this Congress any longer, any further.